Okay, good evening and welcome, everybody. We have a full house tonight. Welcome scouts. Thank you so much for coming. This is really important for all of us. You are the future leaders of all the communities in the surrounding areas and maybe nationally, we'll see how that goes. I mean, I think you guys have some great skills. With that, we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance and Orion Lowry is going to lead us. Mr. Lowry, would you stand up? And all of us stand up, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, everybody. Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Lowry. Sure appreciate that. And do I hear motion for adoption of the agenda?
Yes, that'd be fine.
To where, to where? Move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Thank you, everybody.
One change to the agenda? Uh, moving, um, item nine, let's see, is that, uh, three, yeah, nine A uh, two in front of, yeah, in front of the consent calendar, so between six and seven.
Okay, uh, do the makers of the motion, uh, original motion agree to a friendly amendment? Okay, all of us in favor of the agenda is amended?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Any nays or ayes online? Make sure everybody can hear me.
Yay.
Yeah. We love your enthusiasm. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, it passes unanimously. Appreciate that. And with that, we're moving on to public comments, and the council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or other topics the council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor of council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. Chief, thank you, sir. All right, let's start with, uh, Bill Leon. Welcome, Bill.
Right here. Thank you. My name is Bill Leon. I live in Lake Forest Park. Um, I just wanted to speak in favor of the resolution on trans rights. It's coming up later. Uh, I want to say politically, socially, and economically, these are troubling times. Among the many issues and misuses of power, being brutally and blatantly used by the president and by others in his administration, and many local state administrations controlled by Republicans, one of the most egregious is the attacks on transgender people. Fascists and others who support or act like them often bring a scapegoat for the focus of their hatred. The tactic is designed to get a mob to side with them against people who are different in some way and to distract the masses while the leaders take more power and resources from everyone for the use of the elite. In Nazi Germany, it was the Jews, homosexuals, and Romani. Today in America, they target transgender people and also immigrants, people of color and others. If they succeed, more hatred and more, more, uh, groups will follow. Actions to take away the rights of transgender people are multiplying across America. It takes courage to speak out against this and to reaffirm one's support for people perceived as different. Doing so really helps. It helps transgender people and it helps all of us recognize our common humanity despite how we look, who we love, what we think, and how we choose to live. We cannot protect people who are trans from all hatred and consequences, but we can speak out on their behalf. They do not need any special rights, just plain old human rights. Rights are not something governments can give or take away. They are inherent in being human and being alive. It is sad that we have to keep reminding the world that all people deserve equal rights, but I'm glad to live in a city where people and leaders are willing to speak up when needed. I encourage you to pass this resolution and to keep reminding staff and citizens in Lake Forest Park that we will not tolerate discrimination on any basis. I suggest you hand out copies of this resolution with all applications for passports with a short note explaining that even though the current federal government does not respect the right to be who you are, this city does. This community, the schools, and especially our youth are supportive when people come out or transition. At least here, most people tolerate difference. Maybe we can learn from our youth that in reality, we are all different in some way. Tolerance of difference with real equality and equal protection under the law is the basis for a real democracy. Thank you for reaffirming this.
Thank you, Bill. Very thoughtful comments. Appreciate that. Uh, let's see, uh, Diane, uh, I'm sorry, Dana Campbell. Welcome, Dana.
My name is Dana Campbell, and I've been a resident in Lake Forest Park for thirteen years now. And I want to laud Bill for his very clear and excellent statement. I agree with everything that he says. I also feel like these are extremely scary times for a lot of people, especially our youth, and I know a lot of people, youth that are mentally affected by the sorts of things that our administration, the national level is doing right now. I am an instructor at the University of Washington Bothell Campus, and many of those students are, um, people that are targeted by all sorts of things, including um, the gender bias against them and, um, taking a stand against, um, the people who are different, trans people and LGBTQ plus people, um, is not helping anything for anybody. It's only a negative, and I really, uh, urge you to pass this resolution, and I think the resolution is really well-written and a good one. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much, Dana. Appreciate your comments. Sally Yamazaki. Welcome, Sally.
Hi. I guess it doesn't bend.
And also lower the podium, too, if you.
Oh, that's okay. So I'm a resident of Lake Forest Park, and I'm like Bill and Dana and other people who are here. Just want to encourage you to pass the resolution, sixty-five, two thousand nine. Is that it? I think that was it. Um, as Bill mentioned, we are sitting in precarious times right now. Things that uh, rights and all sorts of things that we maybe took for granted are being lost. As a third-generation Japanese-American with a family that was incarcerated during World War II, these things really can happen and are happening. So the fact that our city is taking a stand and if you pass this resolution is so important because back in my parents' days, no one stood up. And in history, it'll show those who stood up. And so it's, uh, it's bravery to do this in these times, but it's significant. And as a citizen, I couldn't be prouder. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Uh, Dan Benson. Welcome, Dan.
Okay, uh, my name is Dan, Dan Benson, a longtime resident of beautiful Lake Forest Park. Uh, it's a privilege and honor to live here. Um, and, uh, I'm very proud of the city council and, and the work that you're doing, and especially in favor of this resolution, I encourage you to, to vote for it. I don't want to repeat everything that Bill said. He was very eloquent and succinct and, but I agree with, with all the statements he said. You know, it's important to do the right thing, basically, be a human being. Uh, and I think, uh, another thing is, uh, that the nice thing of living in a small town like ours is we, we can, it's much easier to have a little bit of a big voice, you know, when you come down to talk to the city. Uh, so, um, uh, I, I think that's also, uh, a privilege to be able to do that and, and, uh, talk to everybody here and, and get my voice, uh, you know, said. So as my, um, uh, representatives of, of the local government here, I strongly encourage you to, to pass that resolution and you'll, you'll make us all proud.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dan. Appreciate your comments. Armon, um, Micheline, welcome, Armon. Nice, he has his hat on, yes, for a very cold day, a couple of years ago.
Thank you so much for your time. My name is Armon Micheline. I am a forty-five-year resident of Lake Forest Park. I'm speaking in favor of the resolution on the table. Um, I'm a gay man, have been all my life, and I have not made any attempt to hide the fact of who I am. My partner and I lived together in our home here in Lake Forest Park for forty-two years until his death in twenty-twenty. And I am so happy to be able to make this statement because I could not say it about my work life. In my forty-five years in Lake Forest Park, I have never experienced discrimination for being a gay man, which is very surprising. When I lived in Minneapolis, it was frequent. It was nasty. As far as transgender, I've known a number of people who are transgender. Unfortunately, several who felt the pressures on their life were so much, they took their own lives. Others have not had really a good life because they have so little support. And for our community to speak in their favor, to stand up for them, means the world to me, and I know to so many of the people. I know we have transgender in our community who will love to feel supported. It's like a warm hug when you feel like everyone else has been just giving you the finger. So, thank you to the council. Thank you for your openness and willingness to support, and I sincerely hope you follow the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Armon. Appreciate the comments very much. Linda Benson. Uh, oh, she said, no, you didn't want to comment. I'm sorry. It's okay. You're welcome to if you'd like to. I, I have to go all the way to the right to find the yes or no for the comments. So, with that, is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to make public comment? Okay, that will close the public comment. Sincerely appreciate all the very thoughtful comments, um, especially during the challenges we're all experiencing in the world today. So, uh, moving on, we are, um, going to presentations. Chief, we're going to talk about Crime Watch. And we have some friends here who have been on Crime Watch for two years?
Two-ish.
I'm being, I'm joking. Um, we have some friends here who have been in Crime Watch for many, many, many decades, and they are real troopers when it comes to helping our community and making sure people are safe, particularly seniors and people who are not in their homes um, during certain periods of time. So, chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for saying those wonderful things because that is very true. Thank you, council, and a huge crowd tonight. This is fantastic. So, uh, I'm going to be honoring Guy Forbes and Casey Kryzmenzki tonight on, uh, the dedication to our Crime Watch and to our city. So Guy Forbes has been a dedicated member of the Lake Forest Park Crime Watch for an impressive thirty years and serving his community and commitment with heart. Born in nineteen forty-five in San Jose, California, Guy's life has been marked by a passion for service and a love for helping others. After graduating with a classical piano degree, Guy embarked on a long and successful career as a bus driver. Now, this is not any old bus driver, by the way. Spending years driving for Greyhound, Gray Line of Seattle, Port of Seattle, and other bus companies with a total of three million miles driven.
Wow.
Guy was expertly trained as a Greyhound dr- Greyhound, uh, bus driver. His love for buses is also reflected as an extensive collection of model and toy buses from various companies. Beyond his professional life, Guy has always been deeply involved in community service as a volunteer pianist or pianist, I think is the way you're supposed to say that. He was, he has performed at the Shoreline Lake Forest Park Senior Center, LDS Church Services, and a variety of events including weddings, funerals, memorial services, and local Crime Watch parties. For eighteen years, he, he played at Lake Forest Park Elementary School for a sing-along program, sharing his love and music with young students. In addition to his musical talents, Guy's also been a key figure in our Crime Watch for three decades. He assisted with countless community events, including Fourth of July and Christmas parties, and even drove seniors for outings as part of his volunteer work at the senior center. A proud father of six children, three biological and three adopted, Guy's deep commitment to a family is a cornerstone of his fam- of his life. When his birth mother of his adopted children tragically passed away, Guy stepped in to ensure they stayed together, providing a loving home and family for them. In his retirement, Guy stays active, helping neighbors with appointments, cherishing his role as a grandfather. His life partner, Lorraine, has a granddaughter, Chelsea, who works as an embryologist, and her husband Xavier, a pulmonary researcher, both of whom are making their home in the area. Guy Forbes is a remarkable individual whose life is a testament to service, compassion, and community involvement, and we celebrate Guy today not only for his service, for his, uh, positive impact he continues to have on our community. So come on up here. Thank you. So I'm going to be presenting this certificate of appreciation to you, and then also a chief's coin, which is really difficult to get, so you've got one of those. Oh, my goodness.
But yeah, but this is Bill.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you for your service. So, Chief, just a quick, interesting note about how small this community is. So his life partner, Lorraine, her daughter and I have known each other, well, she's known me since I was three, so please don't tell stories about when I was a little kid. I went to school with her daughter and her son from kindergarten through twelfth grade. So, this is, uh, I, the people join our community and they stay here and they embrace it. So Guy is a testament to that as well.
Excellent. All right, next, we're up, Casey. Casey Kryzmenzki, thirty years of appreciation for Crime Watch. Uh, he's got a little bit more of the police side of this as well in here. So Craig Casey Kryzmenzki has been an invaluable member of the Lake Forest Park community for nearly three decades with his dedication to public service. Casey began his career with the Lake Forest Park Police Department in September of nineteen ninety-six, where he worked as a sergeant until his retirement in twenty-twelve. His passion for community and safety and crime prevention led him to take on the role of crime prevention coordinator in February of twenty thirteen, where he served just until the end of last year. His role as Crime Watch coordinator, Casey was responsible for overseeing Crime Watch and coordinating National Night Out. Everybody knows what National Night Out is, so he was our coordinator for our city for many, many years. Um, this event contributes significantly to strengthening the relationship between the police department and the community, fostering a safer, more connected neighborhood. After stepping down from his coordinating role, Casey continues to remain active in, uh, volunteering Crime Watch, continuing to offer his time to the Lake Forest Park residents. So, uh, Guy and Casey's service has been integral to the success of the Crime Watch program, and their commitment to the community is a reflection of a deep-rooted dedication to make Lake Forest Park a better place to live. Their community outreach has touched the lives of many, and we are grateful for their service. There is a lot of people in our community that spend a lot of time volunteering, and we cannot function as a healthy city without the amazing community members that we have. They just reached some pinnacles here of thirty years, and that's why we're recognizing, but we recognize everybody in our city that does an amazing job. And Casey, thank you very much for this. All right. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks, Guy and Casey, both of you. I mean, thirty years, that's extraordinary. Um, we sincerely appreciate your efforts. Uh, we are going to move on to Cory has, um, presentation here regarding the Garden Tour and Horizon View Art Tour Nation, and I think Roz is here as well. Welcome.
I have a little show and tell. So I am Roz Byrd. I've lived in Lake Forest Park for forty-eight-plus years. So I've been here a long time and love all the things that are happening here. So I'm the chair of the Lake Forest Park Secret Garden Tour Committee. And as many of you know, we support the, in a small way, uh, the four nonprofit organizations that, uh, produce the garden tour, and we bank money for public art. And our first commission is the metal sculpture outside City Hall, kind of a sophisticated piece to go with the city. Um, and now we have just commissioned our second piece, which will be a sculptural, really fun sparkle piece for Horizon View Park. And I have the maquette of that here that, so the artist, we put out an RFQ. We had eleven responses from qualified people. We went through those. We interviewed three, and we selected Melissa Cole, who lives in the Spokane Valley. And as a glass mosaic artist, she also paints. So, um, I'd like to read you her statement before you see this, and then Cory will bring it around so you can see some details. And the location that we would like to put it on is a little knoll to just north of the swings at the park. But because this has a bench in it, ADA seems to come into play, and there's no path that goes up on that knoll. So we're kind of working that. I went up there today and tried to find a flatter location by the path. So that's a possibility. The other possibility is to put it on the knoll, but take out the bench, not have a bench, but put a critter, a giant critter in the middle instead that would be mosaic. So we, we still have to work on a few things, but basically it's going to be cool. And the bottom of the piece is all mosaics that the community will help put together. We're going to have a mosaic-making day at Horizon View Park, probably in the summer, so that all these little critters around the bottom can be put together, and then when it's all installed, Melissa will place those around and route them. Um, so the benches are concrete. This is all concrete with mosaics. The giant fern is metal steel, and the fronds are perforated steel. They'll have little holes so light can come through uh, as well as the leaves over on the bleeding heart, and there's a bee and a butterfly, so that's fun. So I'd like to, I'd like to read the statement that Melissa wrote about this piece. She calls it nature's repose. Of course, that only works maybe if there's a bench there. I don't know. Um, is a sculptural interactive seating proposal specifically designed to be installed within, in the boundaries of Horizon View Park. It highlights the flora and the fauna found in and around the park. Slated for installation on top of the grassy hill beside the playground, it offers bench seating and views in either direction. There's a bench on both sides. On either side of the two concrete benches with a backrest in between are two steel sculptures. One represents a fern frond with a western swallowtail butterfly, and the other, a native bleeding heart flower with western bumblebee. The sculptural seating offers a great location to sit, watch children at play, as well as a memorable place to take selfies. So we, we hope it still becomes a bit of an interactive piece, no matter where we put it. So do you have any questions?
Colleagues, questions?
Have a minute for questions while she lets you see the maquette up close and personal.
Uh, yeah, because we're, uh, sorry, vice chair.
Take a look at all the, there's fish and a raccoon and an owl and some other critters in the base.
Well, Ms. Byrd, thank you very much for the presentation. It's an amazing piece of artwork. It will really be an addition to that park. I hope we can get those issues with the, uh, sightings sorted, but, uh, you know, thank you for spearheading this and contacting the artist and having that whole search for the art in the first place. So, great work.
So you're welcome, and, um, no, just for, I guess, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Roz. Appreciate your time. Thank you, Cory. Okay, let's see, let's make sure we're not missing anyone here. Um, we're going to move on to proclamations now. Yeah. Um, and, uh, let's see, Matt, help me navigate this. So we have Alex Henry that's joining us. Welcome, Alex. And oh, okay, we're therapists for King County, I'm sorry. And I will, um, I'm reading the proclamation?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, thank you. Bear with me, folks. We have a whole lot of proclamations tonight, and this is a very important one. It's Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexual assault is pervasive, every sixty-eight seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the United States, and whereas sexual violence impacts everyone, anyone can be a victim of sexual violence, and people who commit sexual abuse, assault, and harassment exist in all of our communities. This underscores why it is important for all of us to care about sexual violence and to take steps to promote safety and the well-being of others. And whereas Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ plus people, elders, people with disabilities, and others have been historically oppressed and are just, are disproportionately affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas sexual assault is one of the most under-reported crimes for many reasons, but for survivors who are already most marginalized, face most, excuse me, face additional barriers to reporting such as language, immigration status, and/or disability, and whereas ending sexual violence requires us to address racism, sexism, and all forms of oppression and contribute, that contribute to the perpetration of sexual assault. And whereas sexual violence exists on a continuum of behavior that includes racist, sexist, transphobic, homophobic, ableist, and other hate speech, this range from rape jokes to verbal harassment to physical assaults. And whereas survivors of sexual assault may never forget their victimization, but they can heal with support from family, friends, and their communities. Sexual assault programs across King County and Washington State offer free and confidential support as we have representatives here now, and advocacy and information and resources to survivors. And whereas by working together as a community, we can alleviate trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to and actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual violence. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, joining advocates and communities throughout King County and taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors. Together, we will, we commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community. Sign this twenty-seventh day of twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Ms. Henry, for being here so much. Appreciate your time. Is there anything you would like to add to the mix?
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. Uh, like you've said, my name is Alex Henry. And like you also said, I'm a therapist here in King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, and we're a nonprofit that serves the city and all communities throughout King County. Um, and I'm here to accept the Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month proclamation on behalf of our organization. So thank you for being a part of the solution to sexual violence. Uh, first, to the survivors in our community, I want to say you're not alone. Sexual assault is common, and half women, half of women and one-third of men have experienced sexual assault in their lifetime. People from marginalized communities, like it was mentioned, due to disability, race, or ethnicity, uh, or their gender, or sexual identities, to name a few, are even at greater risk. And chances are that you know someone who has been sexually abused. Trauma, the trauma of sexual assault is something that can affect a survivor's mental, physical, and behavioral health uh, and their ability to form healthy relationships, remain in school or in the workplace, and so much more. But recovery from trauma of sexual assault is possible with support. CASEARC assisted four thousand three hundred individual survivors and their family members in the last year alone. Almost half of CASEARC clients are teens and children. We know young people are the most vulnerable to sexual, sexual assault and the least likely to speak up about it uh, and to be believed when they do. I want to end with another message to survivors. Uh, free and confidential help is available to survivors or anyone who needs information about sexual assault. Our twenty-four-hour resource line is a good starting point at eight 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 nine nine VOICE. Uh, we always say we can't change what we can't talk about, so thank you for your leadership and willingness to be loud about sexual assault. And I think that's all I have. The only other thing I'd like- The only other thing I'd like to mention is my power went out 10 minutes before this, so I'm on my phone with a lamp. Impromptu, but I'm really glad I could make it and give that and, and receive that proclamation. So I appreciate it.
Alex, we sincerely appreciate your being here and I apologize for not asking your pronouns, but thank you for being here. And I also want to say this is something that, as in many, many places out there in the world, if you see something, say something. There are vulnerable people that need support and people like Alex are there to help. And it's anonymous and confidential and don't let it pass, please, folks. So thank you so much for being with us, Alex. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Hey, thank you. We're going to move on to another proclamation and a very important one as well. Education and Sharing Day. Whereas equality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, country and society at large. In the city of Lake Forest Park, we strive for the betterment of all our people through an increased focus on education and sharing. Whereas through providing the possibility for an excellent education for all, especially children, we can create hope for brighter, kinder and more united and prosperous future for the lives of so many. And whereas one of the leading global advocates for the advancement of education, I'm going to not get this name correctly. Who? Lubu Recher Rebbe. Rebo Rebbe, sorry, Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schneerson dedicated his life to promoting education and stressed the importance, importance of moral and ethical education as a bedrock of humanity and the hallmark of our healthy society. And whereas in recognition of Rebbe's outstanding and lasting contributions towards improvements in education morality and the acts of charity, he was awarded the National Scroll of Honor and Congressional Medal of Honor. The United States Congress has established his birthday, the 11th month of Nissan, as a national day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. Whereas April 9th, 2025 will mark 123 years since Rebbe's birth and the date he was celebrated around the nation and the globe in tribute to the Rebbe's vision and guidance and leadership. And whereas for more than 40 years, the President of the United States has recognized Rebbe's contribution by reclaiming, proclaiming Education and Sharing Day USA. Now therefore, the mayor and the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim April 9th, 2025, Education and Sharing Day and call upon all residents to reach out to young people in our community, support the education of youth and work to create a brighter, better, brighter and more hopeful future of for all. Sign this 27th day, March 2024. Now more important than ever before, folks. And with that, we're going to celebrate Earth Day and Arbor Day. Vice Chair Ferretani, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so this is the Earth and Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 2025, Washington State celebrates Arbor Day on April 12th and Earth Day on April 22nd. And National Arbor Day is on April 25th. And whereas both days present a time to recognize the importance of preserving our natural resources. And whereas the city of Lake Forest Park recognizes the benefits of its urban forests for improving air and water quality, combating climate change and generally enhancing the quality of life. And whereas the city of Lake Forest Park is designated Tree City for the 22nd year. Give yourselves a hand. And whereas the city of Lake Forest Park wants to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change. And whereas we are all stewards of this earth and have a responsibility to preserve it for future generations. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby call upon all citizens of Lake Forest Park to join in celebrating Earth Day and Arbor Day by preserving and enhancing our natural environment in Lake Forest Park. Sign this 27th day of March.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ferretani. Very important work. Okay, we're, that is, we're done with proclamations. We're moving on to the consent calendar. I would since, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, one more. Okay, the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, moving the resolution, yes, from. Sorry, I should have grabbed my reading glasses. I'm sorry, we're moving up. The, yes, we're moving, I'm, apology, we're moving up item 9A to resolution 25 dash 2007, authorizing the mayor to sign the Public Works Board funding agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce for funding of the roundabout construction phase. And our friends Katie and Rebecca are going to be joining us. Our Katie's got lead and Rebecca's back up here, I can tell you. Please, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for moving my, my part of this meeting up. I really appreciate that. I'm here to talk to you about the roundabout. As you know, we are coming to the end of our pre-design portion of this huge project. And we're getting all of our ducks in a row, so to speak. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about funding. And this is a really big project with a lot of funding sources. In addition to local funding, we have funding, oh, thanks, Matt. In addition to local funding, we have funding from WashDOT. We have two grants from the Transportation Improvement Board. We have some funding from our friends at the Lake Forest Park Water District. And rounding out our funding package is the Public Works Board Construction Funding Agreement for a loan for $2 million. And that completes the whole funding portfolio. It's just over $7 million for the roundabout. Just to give you a tiny bit of background information, as, as a refresher, you are aware of all this. In June 2024, the city applied for this competitive loan from the Public Works Board. And in September, we were awarded the full $2 million ask. And since that time has passed, the loan agreement has been developed. It's been reviewed by our legal team and it is now ready for execution. The terms of the loan are $2 million, 20-year loan at interest rate of, it's actually 1.71%, but I rounded on the slide. So those, those are all the loan terms. There's not really a lot to go over. Nothing has changed since the outset of your decision for us to pursue this loan. These were the terms that were, that were originally discussed nine months ago. And they, they came through with that. So that's the whole presentation. Does anyone have questions about this loan?
Colleagues, questions for Katie.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I noticed that there's an incentive. So that if we can complete the certified project completion record within 36 months of the date of the agreement, there's a savings on our interest. So I hope we can achieve that. Other, I, I don't have any other question.
Great point. Colleagues, any other questions? You look like you're starting to answer, yeah. Vice Chair Ferretani, please.
So thanks for the presentation, Ms. Phillips. And I'm just wondering, is there, this is our, I think this is our first touch? There's a second.
Uh, let's see, where are we here? Yeah.
Okay. Is there an urgency in getting this passed?
It must be executed, I believe they give us nine months to execute. However, we do plan to bid this project very, very soon. And having all of the funding in order before, before we bid would be most prudent.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Ferretani. Any other questions from Ms. Phillips? Colleagues, I would just say that we have a lot on our plates coming, or you all do, as well as we do. And if there's moving some of these things forward might be a thing that, Mr. Lebo.
So I'd like to propose a motion that we waive the three-touch rule to move this as a final action this evening. For the reasons that we do have a lot on our plate, this is an agreement that is beneficial to the city of Lake Forest Park. Having all our funding in place prior to bidding, I think is an important consideration.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lebo. Any further discussion, colleagues? There's a motion on the floor to waive the three, three-touch rule. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, no nays. I entertain principle motion for adoption of Mr. Lebo.
So I move that we adopt resolution 25 dash 2007, authorizing the mayor to sign the Public Works Board funding agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce for funding the roundabout project construction phase.
Second.
Move in the second, any further comments or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Council. Thank you, Budget Chair Lebo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Appreciate that. This is how we get things done. Appreciate that, Mr. Lebo. Okay, we're moving on here to boxing center. There we go, back to the races here. Entertained a motion for adoption.
I move that we adopt, we approve the consent agenda.
Let me pause for a second. Thank you all for coming. Please come again anytime. Thank you, Guy and Casey both. Appreciate your service. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Let's move in the second, any discussion regarding the adoption of the consent calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Guys have it, thank you. We are moving forward and we are on to ordinances and resolution for introduction referral. Cory Roche has the floor for ordinance 251307 amending section 2.337.010, chapter 2.37 of Lake Forest Park Municipal Code, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board prohibiting, I'm sorry. Wow, it's been a long day. Providing for severability. Well. There's a joke in there somewhere, folks. I'll, I'll let you go with it. And establishing an effective date. My apologies, Ms. Roche, you have the floor.
Yeah, so I'm here to ask guys to think about amending the Parks Board, the section 2.37.010 of the 2.37. Right now we have five or seven board members, six are, I'll say, adult positions and one student voting. And so I'm recommending to put the park board back to seven voting members and then having three additional youth advisory positions. And then also opening up the board to business owners as well as residents or who own property. So. Yeah, our board's busy and we'd like to get more help on.
Thank you. We sincerely appreciate the work of you and the board too. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Roche? Please.
I'm just curious about the inclusion of business owners. Is that just to broaden our base of who may be interested or is there a specific?
Yeah, to broaden, I think it'd be great to get a town center representative if possible. Back on the Community Service Commission, this was also there. I know, I remember Jeff Weisman was a great contributor to the board, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think it might be nice to get some other perspective.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Yes, I'd like to speak in favor of this. The current Parks Board is down in membership because of one resignation. And the experience with the student representatives is mixed. So I strongly support this and I do think it's a really fun, dynamic group with a lot going on and more to come in the future. So this is something that Cory and I and the Parks Board have talked about for quite a while. But I'm glad it's coming to a head right now for, for decision soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? I will make a rare comment from the dais and in support of this, you made reference to Jeff Weisman, who I do, we just had the pleasure of seeing, I haven't seen him in years, at the Third Place Common Breakfast. And he was instrumental in, in many of the things that, on many things he was involved with. But he was definitively with, with previous board he was involved with. So I applaud this consideration, Council, if you can move forward with it. Anyone else? And where are we on? So this is first touch. We can.
If you want to.
So yeah, my question to you is also wondering if there's any urgency to this?
It'd be nice to get more board members as soon as possible. If we want to wait, we can, but we are, have a full summer ahead of us, so.
So in light, so in light of, it's, it's non-controversial, so I would, I would like to move that we suspend the three-touch rule for this particular ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the three, three-touch rule regarding resolution 25200. I'm sorry. What am I? Oh, sorry, 251307, excuse me. Are there any further comments? Okay, all those in favor signify, suspending the three-touch rule signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Guys have it for suspending the three-touch rule regarding ordinance 251307. Vice Chair Ferretani.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to move then to, to approve ordinance 25 dash 1307, amending section 2.337.010, chapter 2.37 of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ferretani.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? Thank you, everybody. If the ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I think it's a great step in the right direction. And with that, we're moving on to another, and actually probably one of the most important topics of the day, Councilmember Goldman. Resolution 252009 affirming the city's commitment to ensure all individuals, regardless of gender identity, sexual orientation or gender expression feel safe and supported. Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm proud to be introducing this resolution. I'll start with a little story. I first got involved in LFP politics about eight years ago when the city was working on its welcoming city ordinance. And that was in the context of welcoming the immigrant community, because at the time, they were the group that was being scapegoated. And I thought it was very important that Lake Forest Park was, was declaring itself to be welcoming to a community that at the federal level was being hurt. And I think we're at a similar crossroads now, where now the group that's being scapegoated is the transgender community. And it does hit home for me. I believe I'm the first openly gay city council member in the city. And so I'm aware of that sort of discrimination. And I think it's important for us to once again stand up and say that we are a welcoming community that regardless of who you are, you are welcomed to be part of the Lake Forest Park fabric. And so I, I and Councilmember Ferretani worked on this resolution and I'm proud to present it to the rest of the council.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, questions about resolution 252009? Comments? Councilmember Lebo.
I would, I would just offer that, and very much appreciate the public comment this evening, because I think it expresses the values of who we are, we are as a city, and that human rights is a right. And it's one that should be shared by all and not in any way discriminated against. I also want to recognize my councilmembers Goldman and Ferretani for bringing this forward. I think these are important statements that we can make as a community that says these are important values to us and we stand up and support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, any other comments? Point, Vice Chair Ferretani.
And I'd also like to express my appreciation for Councilmember Goldman. He did the heavy lifting on this. And also want to mention that Sarah Betanel, who's a Shoreline School Board member and a resident of our community, mentioned that the Charter for Compassion, which we approved many years ago.
2013, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's coming up for a revision. There's going to be a 2.0 version of it in November. And I anticipate that we'll be talking about that at that time. So do appreciate all the public comment. Please keep these thoughts in front of your mind as we go in through this next troubling period.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ferretani. Councilmember.
Thank you for bringing this forward. And I also think there is a sense of urgency on moving forward with this. Because in light of all of the discourse that's going on, we need some sort of light of hope that we can, that we, taking action, it helps.
Absolutely. Thank you. Colleagues, I'm sorry, I'm going to exercise chair's privilege again, because this is too important not to speak to. This was originally brought, Charter for Compassion was originally brought to my attention by the late Ann Stadler of Third Place Commons Lore now. And we became friends over discussion, discussing this. We have now, the council has. Reaffirmed it multiple times, and thank you very much, Councilmember Goodman, for bringing it back. As my best friend and brother is a gay man who has suffered from discrimination in the past and. When California allowed gay marriage to be. Legal, my wife and I flew down to California and marched with twelve thousand people in celebration of that event. This is a human issue. It is, as said, stated before. People who live in fear look for scapegoats. And they find the, the closest thing that they can go after that they don't understand. And they need to understand better and they need to be more human. And so this is an important piece of legislation. Any other comments, colleagues?
If there are not, I would like to move that we waive the three-touch rule regarding resolution twenty-five dash two thousand nine.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-five two thousand nine. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Suspending a three-touch rule. Any further discussion, colleagues? All those in favor of suspending the three-touch rule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, passes unanimously to suspend the three-touch rule. Moving on to the main motion.
I would like to move resolution twenty-five dash two thousand nine affirming the city's commitment to ensure all individuals, regardless of gender identity. Sexual orientation or gender expression feel safe and supported.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-five two thousand nine with the suspension of three-touch rule. Any further comments? Councilmember Riddle.
Just simply to say that I'm thankful that I can support this resolution and similar resolutions as they have come up in the past and. I hope this is the last one we'll have to do, but I doubt it.
Councilmember Goldman.
Yeah, I'm gratified to hear all the support from the council and also from the community. I'm glad that we're passing this. Perhaps once it's passed, there could be a newsflash to alert the community that we are supporting this.
We'll make that happen. Thank you. Without any further comments, all those in favor of adoption of resolution twenty-five two zero zero nine. Affirming the city's commitment to ensure all individuals, regardless of gender identity, sexual orientation or gender expression. Feel safe and supported. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any ayes? The ayes have it, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Council. Okay, so we are, let's see, item B on ordinances and resolutions for discussion and council dis. Or council discussion, excuse me, twenty-five thirteen oh eight. Amending chapter eighteen fifty-two of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code. Signage, bring sign code into compliance with recent legal decisions. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. I'm excited and bummed. I'm bummed because we're switching gears and I've lost the entire audience to.
Y'all come back. We're talking about signs now.
How fascinating this planning is. But thank you for saying.
Sorry, Mark, I tried.
I'm excited because we're finally getting back to this. So the mayor speaks quite frequently at leadership about. The history behind this that predates me. I've been here a year and so it's a pleasure to bring this back. And most of you know the history much better than I do, so I'll just start with last year. The, when the Planning Commission finished their recommendation after lengthy work. They forwarded that to the City Council in December of twenty twenty-three. The decision then was to table it until you had a new Community Development Director. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I arrived in January and we put it together for, to, to keep it going in April. But it really was too soon. I have a lot of experience with signs, but every community is different. Absolutely, especially in this regard. So in April, we weren't ready to take the next step. We answered some questions, we got some feedback, came back in June, fixed some of those issues. And asked the question, are we ready to kind of move forward? Not for the finishing public hearing or decision, but for planning to do what we need to do for the city to make a decision. And in June of last year, that was decided. So staff went away, did the Department of Commerce sixty-day review. Finished that. They send that to agencies, give them an opportunity to comment. We received no substantive comments. At the last meeting, I mentioned, or maybe at the retreat, I mentioned we got one comment. It was favorable and it was thanking us for the opportunity to comment, but that they had no comment at that, at that time. That was from the Duwamis Tribe, so I'm thankful for them to send that. But the. Next step was the CEPAR State Environmental Review. We did a checklist on project, circulated that, no comments were received. Appeal period passed, no appeal was filed. So those two steps are completed. Now we're back before you for more discussion, unfortunately. A public hearing in the coming weeks. And a recommendation tonight that you do not waive through a third reading. What I'd like to outline is that tonight we view this as a reintroduction. And then plan for a public hearing and a second touch. With an opportunity to make slight non-substantive changes. That reflect the questions or concerns you have. Then come back for a third touch. Separate from the public hearing night and potentially take action. And in so doing, we have time to really make this better. I believe at this point, this is passable. It fixes the issues and it's ready to go. But fine tuning could address issues like code enforcement and clarity. And then just add another one or two percent on the top to make this a little bit more direct and manageable. So at that risk, what I wanted to do tonight, to reintroduce it, entertain any questions. I also learned that sign code is hard to read. The context I do it in is you have to first start with what type of sign is it? And read all the definitions and define the type of sign. Then you have to know somewhat where that sign's going to be. Then you discover what the zoning is, then you could read the regulations and it starts to make sense. If you jump right to the regulations, you're likely reading the wrong paragraph, the wrong sentence, or even the wrong area of town. So approaching that way, the only way to really understand the whole context is to be embarrassingly at home when the phone's off quiet. Uninterrupted and read it start to finish and it starts to make sense. That's why I'm asking for a little bit more discussion. Even though I think it's ready. You discover some opportunities. That I think we should consider before moving forward. So what I wanted to do is entertain any questions or discussion. You may hit some of the points that I, I flagged. Whatever does not come up, I could pose tonight and then give you time to think about it. As we formulate words or get more information to you. They're pretty easy, they're not significant, they're not substantive, they won't change the ordinance that. Commerce reviewed, but they deal with real-life situations out in the community. Thank you.
Director Hoffman, I would, actually, I want to give a little bit of legislative history since I've been rattling around here for a long time. This has been going on since, I believe, nineteen ninety-nine. And to Director Hoffman's credit, they had no traction on it until he took office. So we really appreciate that this is coming to you and we're finally gonna have some. Solutions here. Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Yes, thank you very much. I wanted to remind my fellow council members that. We had a presentation from our city attorney. Maybe six months ago, maybe a little bit longer, I don't recall. But anyway, the, the main theme here that started this in process. Is that you can't regulate the content of signs, whether it's political, whether it's. Religious, whether it's commercial, you can only regulate without regard to the content of the signs. And I was liaison to the Planning Commission when they first took this up. And everyone at the start, this is before our Community Development Director's tenure. Everyone at the start thought, oh, this will be easy. And instead, the Planning Commission spent a lot of time with it and, and didn't have. Honestly, a full consensus, partly because of those issues of. Time to leave signs up and political signs and, and that kind of thing. So we had some discussion of that a little bit, a while, a little while ago. And I don't think we came to any conclusions either, so, but maybe I don't remember because it's been so long. Anyway, I think it is fair, a very good deed for us to work on getting this done as. As Director Hoffman says, and. I think, you know, it's possible we'll discover some amendments we need to make later on, but I'm not too worried about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Twenty-six years of history suggests that we should get this thing done. Anyone else? Vice Chair Ferratani.
Either way.
You guys, thumb wrestle for it. Go ahead.
I think there's still two pieces in here that I had some concern about, which is the total number of days in a one-year period. And then the total number of signs for any event. So just thinking about the Secret Garden Tour and they have to direct people and there's. Just, they would need more signs than six for their event to be able, so just kind of thinking through those. A little bit more and that the true functionality of what those two pieces to the code do to us. So, just as we move forward.
Thank you. And, and there are more instances, so I would offer the intent of the Planning Commission is captured. And now the opportunity for the City Council is to adjust, make them more flexible and/or more restrictive. I flagged one about the number of temporary signs in the public right-of-way at six. The discussion that came up at a prior meeting was that, that's an opportunity for the council to form a consensus and decide.
Thank you. Vice Chair Ferratani, please.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the reminder, all of you actually, about this. It comes up every so often and it's just long enough for me to forget the discussion. The part that I'm interested in is, we have an ORE. It's in eighteen fifty-two oh forty-five, about halfway through the document. It's section F, and the only difference between, and this is about the signs pertaining to the dates that the, that the signs can be up. Is the difference in the word final. I'm trying to remember why that word final is critical. The final end date specifically.
Council Vice Chair, if I could say that, I think it was to discuss, to discuss. The possibility that you'd have an election, you'd have a primary followed by a final election. And I, I was going to say that one of the items that was also struggled with. Is we used to have for political signs, a requirement that they get taken down right away after the election. And, you know, how can we apply that to, to every, every sign? So I agree with you and just want to say, we still have some tough ones.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Councilmember Goldman.
Yeah, thank you. I was actually gonna flag the same two things that Councilmember Riddle flagged. This is in eighteen fifty-two eighty. A, six and seven. It's about the quantity of temporary signs and the duration. And I was thinking about it from a political perspective. Now, obviously, we can't regulate political signs differently, but just thinking about political signs. If someone has a primary and a general election, they might want their sign up for all of July and all of October, so that's already two months. And they might want more than six. You know, they have one at this corner, or two at the corner by Starbucks. That's already half of their allotment. So I think we should have some restriction on quantity and duration. I just think the numbers that are currently there are too low.
And, and one point, it's staff's opinion that those are two separate events. One's a primary election, the other one's the general election. I've implemented in the past, five days past the primary, and that they don't stay up continuous. That is not popular, because you, as a candidate, would, would like to adhere to the King County election rules. But at the same time, very much. Demonstrate that you're running. So that's. It's an opportunity to adjust if you'd like, but you're right, we can't adjust it to reflect a political.
I just want to clarify about the two separate events, because as I'm reading section eighty. It doesn't refer to events. It's about in the public right-of-way. It can only be in the right-of-way for thirty, for thirty days in a one-year period. So, I mean, unless they're gonna say that my, like, my sign that I put up July first is different than my sign that I put up October first. It feels like I would have used up my thirty days in July and had no more days left for the general election.
And that is one of the items that's adjustable.
Yes, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, let's go with Councilmember Lebo since he has spoken.
This seems to be a popular subject, so. In that same paragraph and signs in the public right-of-way, I would just delete the number of signs. And make it, as previously, it would be a temporary sign that would be tied to a time of the event. And, and staff is offering these amendments in. In line with the Planning Commission, it's your pleasure as a consensus of the council. That would help staff. That eliminates the code enforcement need for me to walk around and count. So I would propose that we not have a numerical number. And one can always say, you know, elect so-and-so or whatever the sign is related to the event. You can say it's a new event, so it's a new timeframe. So I wouldn't expect a lot of enforcement to be strict. As to classifying one event versus the other. And then there are a couple of grammatical things. Eighteen fifty-two oh thirty. Subparagraph A, you deleted both prohibited and illegal, and I think you intended to just delete illegal. When I got to my turn, I was gonna give a special prize. There's always one typo in every document. I was gonna see who discovered it. Prohibited should be underlined. So the words are correct. The red is correct. Illegal should be struck out. Prohibited, underline. If I may, the other is if we have an opportunity to use fewer instead of less.
Yes.
It rained less today than it did yesterday, but it is ten items or fewer in your grocery bag.
As with a riddle.
About sixty days or less.
I guess I just wanted to ask, so you gave us sort of a timeline, a process that you were thinking about. Are you looking for us to give you very specific changes to the language now? Or? How, how, what was, how does, how does our concerns with these? Fit into the process you described at the beginning of presenting this?
My, staff's intent is to not go backwards, right? Commerce review, environmental review. We can, if we need to. But at this point, I think it's fine tuning. And I would, I would welcome and certainly can make any amendments reflected before the public hearing. If you need a workshop or something in addition before we schedule a public hearing, I'd, I'd recommend that.
Counsel, I would recommend on point that maybe committee the whole week. So when it's a public hearing, remind me again. I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
We haven't set a date.
Okay.
Yeah, but we have an opportunity between now and when middle housing takes up the spectrum. To accommodate whatever you need. Our commitment is to get through this.
Sure, you bet. So I was thinking that a committee, the whole workshop-ish kind of situation. Bring amendments to the fore and make recommendations to staff, so they're not creating things out of whole cloth. Because. They have ninety percent of the work done and, and again, unless there's a substantive change, we. We really don't want to go back to commerce, so.
And if I can make a recommendation for when we have that, if we could have the redlined and then a final kind of. Version for us to look at. Sometimes it's hard to parse the final language when it's mixed in.
I just stepped on Deputy Mayor Bodie's toes. Lori, I apologize.
I only wanted to say, let's plan on all council members bringing their specific suggested edits to. To the next cow. The cow in April.
Thank you, Lori. And I'm trying to remember on point. I, I didn't want to supplant some things that you had planned for the cow, so is that okay?
I will have to look at that. I think it's.
I think we're okay, but I.
This, this is important because we do. This is important because we do want to wrap it up. I think Councilmember Lebo's suggestions of taking out the number of signs and so forth is is a good one. And I think Councilmember Riddle had some good questions also. So I just think if everyone could come with their, you know, five top changes, that would be helpful for the for the cow coming up.
Thank you, Lori.
And I will look at the agenda with you.
Attorney Pratt, please.
You can also make sure that when we advertise the public hearing, we make the public aware that you're looking for comments on the range of how on these numbers, how many signs, how many days, so that they know these are not set in stone yet, and you want their comments specifically on numbers.
Great idea. Colleagues, other questions for Director Hoffman on this one?
Wow. And now that I have the recording, if you don't mind, we don't have to Wordsmith or bring it to the Committee of the Whole. We can do that. Find consensus and move on for a public hearing draft. But just so you tonight where my brain is at. Temporary signs as written in here does not include planning strips and planning beds. Talks about medians, roundabouts in the public right of way section. I would offer it needs to include planner strips. One of the benefits of being here for a year is last week, staff was out and we actually saw a planning strip down on Shore Drive. So it is applicable. And what I specifically mean is the language in the code in the draft amendments right now precludes it from being in the street or the sidewalk. Talks about situations where you can put it by feet back from the sidewalk or curb or edge of asphalt, depending on the condition. Then it specifically prohibits them and roundabouts and medians does not mention planner beds. And the situation we have out there in the field is street, curb, planner strip, sidewalk. And in the prior jurisdiction I worked out, that was a point of contention. Staff would offer add. Consider offering, no, consider adding planner strips to that same paragraph, just to ease the clarity for when we interpret it. It is right of way. It's not private property. It's in front of a house. It's maintained by the homeowner, but it very much is in the same line of restriction as median or roundabout. Under temporary signs in the right of way, they're taken care of or spoken to as far as commercial, residential, and so forth. There's a property owner. They have property rights to remove whatever sign is on their property that they didn't put there. So I'm not worried about that. In the public right of way, there is a condition that you could add that helps administrate and code enforce those that are in the right of way in front of someone's property. I can't read the sign, so I can't tell you what types go out there. They happen right now. Somebody places a sign in front of somebody's house. The homeowner calls staff and says, can I remove it? Can you remove it? And the solution is to not create this tracking or permitting or permission step, but a simple sentence in this existing amendment that says it's recommended to get the abutting property owner's permission. That way it's very clear that that middle ground is spoken to, but not necessarily mandatory. The next one you've hit, grand opening. This is a good one. This is perfect timing. As you know, Safeway just opened. Half of what you see out there would not be allowed under the new code, specifically the the strong. I don't even know what to call them. Strong fluttering.
Flags.
And then the the windsock banner. Those would not be allowed under this current language. Banners and then the parking lot light banner that you see would be regulated and would be allowed. And we would have a chance to review them and allow them. But I wanted to make clear that that would be a slight violation under this new code, just so everyone understands. It's not right now, but if you strike those definitions and crowd them all into temporary signage, if anything animated, fluttery, the air guy, that is no longer allowed and would be a opportunity for voluntary compliance under the new code. And then my last one was the typo. Thank you for for reading.
Vice Chair Fertoni.
So the penalty point that you made, Director Hoffman, is an interesting one. Because when you're talking about the Safeway signs, they're on Merlot Guyer property. So isn't that a private property owner?
It is, but there's there's that's where it's important to identify the typo sign, where it's at, and then the zoning.
I see.
Temporary signs has a section, but it's more of the standards of what can they be, the size and so forth. Then each land use, residential, commercial, has provisions for the temporary signs that can go there. So in town center, the the grand opening fluttering sign language that's in the code right now is struck out. Other language is added, but it does not bring it back to grand opening fluttering things. So that's why I just wanted to make it clear. A lot of these red changes are just moving things around and addressing you know, different laws, sign law, First Amendment and so forth. So it looks confusing. Some are just simply cut and pasted elsewhere for formatting. That's one that's specifically changed. So a grand opening of that size would have to adhere to the new rules.
Councilor, colleagues, other questions for Director Hoffman?
Okay, well, so looking forward to the next cow, which is coming up here next month.
At the risk of unraveling, could I add one more?
Absolutely.
The city attorney and I have been talking about another provision in the nonconformity section of the code, which is separate from the sign chapter, amortization of nonconforming signs. So it has quite a history. We could probably talk about it in Committee of the Whole. I don't know that it was discussed or accounted for at the Planning Commission, watching those videos, but I wasn't there. It's not part of these amendments. It's not in the ordinance. My take on that research is it's not intended to be changed. But I want to make sure in this process that when we're done with the sign chapter, everyone's at least aware that the amortization of nonconforming signs is elsewhere in the code. And so that is attachment four of your staffer book.
Start with Councilor Goldman and Councilor Lebo.
Something you said got me thinking. If there is a permanent sign that is allowed by the current code, but would become disallowed by the proposed code, and there's a large expense to the resident or the business to take it down, is that considered a regulatory taking? Where are we basically like, could they come after the city saying, hey, we have to pay a thousand dollars to take the sign down because you changed the rules? We want a thousand dollars from you.
That's precisely why the council and community needs to be aware of this nonconforming sign chapter and the way it's written and decide whether to include review and changes to that. Legal nonconformities can continue. It's not a taking. They can't modify it. If they modify it or it ceases to exist, most nonconforming codes means it's gone. But changing the code and then it becomes nonconforming doesn't mean they have to take it down nor do we have to pay for it. So in reviewing the existing nonconforming code for the last twenty-two years, you may want to consider whether you want to keep that in the code, modify it, or do away with it. And so it's it's a conversation probably best left for not tonight, Committee of the Whole. Unless unless you want to speak about it tonight.
Let's leave it to the Committee of the Whole.
I'll just say there is an amortization period to deal with the taking situation. Sort of a teaser so that you'll want to go read it, right?
Councilor Lebo.
No, I was just trying to follow up on that. So this amortization section is where.
Attachment four of your staffer report. Section eighteen point six six point one two five. And the title of that subsection is nonconforming signs. It's a it's a good read to read to review between now and the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Hoffman. Make sure there's no other questions from colleagues. Everyone good? Okay. Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it. Sign code, always good times, folks. I tell you. So we're moving on to ordinances and resolutions for action. Resolution twenty-five oh twenty-five dash two zero zero eight, authorizing the mayor to sign a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lake Forest Park and the Lake Forest Park Police Guild for the term January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Yay, team. This is this is. Thank you, everybody who's been involved with this. Director Hill, please.
Director Hill.
Administrator Hill, sorry.
Whatever. I'm still here.
You can call me Bob. That's all right.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, before you tonight is the collecting collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lake Forest Park and the City of Lake Forest Park's Police Guild. It would have an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Contained within this, and you will find this, it's on page one hundred and eleven of your packet, is the salary increases, both cost of living adjustments and market adjustments for commissioned and noncommissioned employees. Commissioned are your officers. Your noncommissioned are your record staff as well as your support officer. So you have two of each of those currently. And so you'll see that those match in this collective bargaining agreement. Everybody gets the same thing. Stepping down from that, the contract also includes changes to incentive pay for a maximum of two incentive pays. Not inclusive of field training officer pay. That's because we need to cycle those new officers through. Make sure they get the appropriate training out in the field. But what this includes is the additional pay of specialty pay for bilingual, a thousand dollars per year. It has specialty pay for special weapons and tactics, also known as SWAT, hostage negotiations team, HNT, and independent investigations team, IFIT, at five percent above base wage pay. And then adds an officer in charge specialty pay of five percent above the base wage rate for that shift. And this is when our sergeants correct are out and one of the other officers has to step up and take that responsibility. There's quite a bit of additional responsibility on them. And so that covers that as well. The other change in here is to the uniform allowance that would change in January first of twenty twenty-six would go from six hundred and twenty-five dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars a year. Obviously, clothing, boots, specialty, just things get expensive. I did want to step back and just point out that as far as payings, you'll see that in twenty twenty-five, it's split in half. The first percentage comes effective January first. This is a retroactive pay. And that the second portion of that becomes effective July first, twenty twenty-five. That was put forward by the Guild and the city negotiating team accepted that. And then in twenty, I see a typo. Councilmember Lebo, I don't have time. I'm sorry. I don't have any prizes, but that that third line under each should say effective January first, twenty twenty-six. Wages shall increase by four point five percent, three point zero percent COLA and one point five percent market adjustment. I can't believe how many eyes were on this and we still missed that. So anyway, stepping back to that. As far as the fiscal and policy implications, we should be in a good place for salary and benefits to be covered. We projected those into the current budget. We still have some vacancies. So I have any concern in this year, but we may need to make some modifications in the upcoming second year of the biennium. We'll just see how those positions fill out. The last thing I would like to say, and I said this today, we had an all-staff meeting to President Walker. He is the Guild President and his team, they were great to negotiate with. They were upfront and honest, and it was very respectful. And it's always a good negotiating. I don't, I want to say that.
It was a positive experience.
Process goes very well, and they present themselves very well, and it helps us get to the end quickly. So appreciate their time, their effort. The chief and Shannon as well, as well as John Lee from Summit and a few others that we pulled in on some specific questions that we had, but overall, we have a great team. We think we have a good collective bargaining agreement. Just make that one Scrivener's error on that second wage increase. And I stand for any questions that you may have on this collective bargaining agreement.
Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill, Councilor Lebo?
Thank you. I think this really speaks well to both the police guild as well as the staff that negotiated this contract. And it certainly represents the values of our community that places a strong emphasis on public safety and the importance of our police officers who do that work every single day. Very proud of what they do. It's not something I can do, but I'm very proud of what they do because they have the skill to do it. Just for clarity, if I understand the pay, it's seven percent retroactive to January first.
Correct.
And then an additional two percent.
The two percent becomes effective July first.
So roughly, one might say it's a nine percent increase for year twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Vice Chair Fertoni.
I also want to thank the negotiations team for a great job. I know I'm in the middle of a sixteen-month negotiation right now, so these things can drag on. But I'm glad that it was snappy, relatively speaking. I also want to acknowledge that I love the fact there's the bilingual boost because we're seeing an increased diversity in, of course, our communities. And being able to communicate is job one, really. So so really appreciate the acknowledgement that that's a great skill to have. So thanks again. I'm very much in favor of this.
I do just want to back up. One thing I forgot to add is this has been ratified by the Guild. They have voted and it has been passed by that body. So this is the last step.
Councilor Goldman?
Yeah, I don't have a question for you. I also want to extend gratitude. I'm glad it was such an amicable negotiation and that we reached an agreement that both sides are happy with. So I'm very much supportive of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Riddle, please.
Is the desire to move this this evening?
Yes, because the last agreement expired December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. So we're just on a continuing agreement. It would be good to wrap it up tonight so that the Guild, I think they would appreciate that.
We've only had two touches, so I would like to suspend the three-touch rule for approving the resolution twenty two thousand and eight. Twenty-five two thousand and eight.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the three-touch rule regarding Resolution twenty-five two thousand and eight. Any further discussion? All those in favor of suspending three-touch rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes. The ayes have it. Thank you for suspending a three-touch rule. Main motion.
I will move Resolution twenty-five two thousand and eight, authorizing the mayor to sign a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lake Forest Park and the Lake Forest Park Police Guild for the term January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, colleagues? I will chime in really quickly here in saying big thanks to the team that negotiated this. This was a big lift and huge thanks to the Guild. Their recognizing the realities of our situation in this community is commendable. Many thanks to the chief for his leadership in that regard. And we all know that our team is out there, chief's team is out there every day, putting their their lives on the line to keep us safe. And so this is an important step. And I really look forward to a place in the future where it's we can continue to do everything we can to support our department. With that, all those in favor of adoption of Resolution twenty-five two thousand and eight, authorizing the mayor to sign a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lake Forest Park and the Lake Forest Park Police Guild for the term January one, twenty twenty-five through December twenty, excuse me, thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, signify by saying aye. Any ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you, counsel. All the people involved. Thank you so much, chief and Phil.
If I can make one parting clarification, that error is only in the report that I drafted. It is correct in the agreement.
Scrivener's errors aside. Thank you very much, Phil. Appreciate that. Okay. Let's see. Are there any other items of council, excuse me, other business council from council? We have everyone present tonight virtually, et cetera. Are there any other items of of council? Uh, excuse me, other business council from council? We have everyone present tonight virtually, et cetera. Okay, council committee reports. Uh, Budget Chair Lebo.
Oh, yeah. I guess I have too. Oh, um, so we met last week to review the uh proposal for the um vehicles for the police department, and it was a very good discussion, and um we are looking forward to bringing that forward to the council. Um, we were also briefed on the um purchases uh for the public works, and I think that when it comes forward again, there will be some additional information for the public works to help understand the the life expectancy of the assets. But in general, it was a very positive discussion. Looking forward to bring it to the full council for uh review and consideration and adoption for the expenditures.
Right. It was a good discussion.
Uh, the other one is uh we had a planning commission meeting on uh March eleventh. And um the very good discussion. Um, and we will be seeing shortly a uh draft ordinance uh to adopt the middle housing, and it will be what we'll sort of talk about is the minimum ordinance necessary to comply with state law without having to adopt the state uh model ordinance. Um, there's a lot of discussion about looking at incentives and looking at opportunities uh for affordable housing, and and that will be in a future discussion in consideration. And finally, um, they elected Sam. I'm going to get the name drawn, Castis. Castigas as chair and Yanni Kashi as vice chair.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilor Lebo. Colleagues, other council member or council committee reports. Councilor Goldman.
Um, so Seashore met um a while ago because our next meeting is next week. Um, but um there's going to be an updated ILA coming to the council. Um, there aren't really any substantive changes to the Seashore Agreement. It's really a lot of it is just sort of codifying that the three official voting members are Lake Forest Park Shoreline in Seattle, along with King County. But also codifying the relationship of South Snohomish County and also Eastside City. So Montlake Terrace, Edmonds, Kenmore, Woodinville, Bothell, just sort of explaining that they're not members of the ILA, but they'll have limited voting rights. Um, otherwise, it's pretty much the same ILA as before.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to Deputy Murray Bodie for just a second.
Yes, um, just to let you know, the Parks Board met uh recently, and as I said, it's a great group. They talked uh a lot about the upcoming summer events and what they're going to do to support them. And on the Arbor Day presentation, the Chair of the Parks Board will also be there to talk about the Parks Board. So it was kind of a collaboration between the Tree Board and the Parks Board. So um uh, just a lot of energy moving forward for the future and good support from Cory.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, Vice Chair for Tony.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh just a quick little couple of reports. So one of them is that the Climate Action Committee met. Want to remind everybody that the Green Fair is on Saturday, so please come. It's from ten to two. And then um related to that, the um climate was it the Climate Policy Action Team? It's basically uh got the uh climate survey out, and I think it's open until April tenth. So everybody, please get your survey in.
Great. Thank you. Colleagues, other comments or thoughts? Um, let's see, a couple of things really quick. Um. Gosh, we have, we've had some fun things going on. Uh, I've just thrown a pitch since uh Cory Roche is not here right now. Pack the Park is coming up in May. I can't believe it's already time for that again. Remember, if I uh it's a half a K run, at least that's what I do. Uh, Perkins, which is really fun, and there's been discussions about sorting, maybe sorting out whether we can. Um, it's block off during that time period, but it should be a good event, and um that'll be really fun. We had a great time with the scouts or the um the Cub Scouts, actually, the Pine Wood Derby at Third Place Commons this past weekend. Absolutely packed. I mean, it was a huge crowd of people. Fastest cars were running and they have radar systems, very sophisticated, running like two hundred and eighteen miles an hour. So I don't know how those kids do it because I my car back in the day was definitely not that, and they let us play with lead sheets to make them heavier, which explains a lot about my mental acuity. But um it's pretty fun, and it it hot highlights the 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 benefit of having a community space like Third Place Commons, because it was not just the kids, it was grandparents and other people joined in to enjoy that. Um, a couple of other things too. Weather is getting warmer out there. Lots of people out there cycling. Be careful on the roads, particularly if you're anywhere near Wash Dots one oh four Ballenger Way. We're going to be working on that and seeing um what we can do to get them off the dime to fix the potholes there. Um, I think there's hopefully there's some opportunity. Their budget challenges are what they are. Um, and I know that our friends at the state and the county are trying to do everything they can to patch the holes. But we're going to have to keep lobbying for the things that our residents are talking about. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention too is we do have a couple of projects coming up here in in short order, and um the Culvert project at thirty fifth and one oh four, the state. Um, we've been discussing the detour that's going to be the state is is going to put in place, which will be one ninety fifth to thirty fifth or vice versa. And Chief and I've had discussions, and we're going to be having a conversation again at traffic calming about what we can do to ensure that the spillover, which is inevitable from people being agitated by the delays there, um, don't impact any neighborhoods. As of now, it appears as though that project is delayed a little bit. I think Director Hoffman indicated it's maybe more like June-ish. Is that permitting?
There's so many. Which project are you?
Culvert L, the the thirty fifth and I forget the L ninety, is it? I forget the name. Oh, one hundred. Thank you. Isn't it? They they have, they don't have a, they don't have a.
We uh, the latest update is they have all the permits that they need. Two weeks ago, we asked them for their timing. Their response was we'll provide you a specific timing, but it's out to bid and we need to decide who's the contractor. Then we'll uh have more certainty as to when they expect to go, and we very much act ask them to coordinate with us.
Appreciate that very much. So what it does, it gives us an opportunity to continue to work on traffic management plan. And the other thing I wanted to mention to you folks is we've talked about traffic safety cameras on fortieth as well as thirty fifth. There may be an opportunity for us to get those in place before um this detour occurs because fortieth, I think it's going to take a a big hit um when it comes to cut around traffic. It already is high volume. So just heads up, we'll see whether we can make the math work from the calendar standpoint, but um as of that, I uh, the last thing I would say, my my um pension is for talking about animals at the end of my discussion. The coyotes are all over. I saw a couple of them up by Briar Crest this morning. Um, and fortunately, they're behaving themselves, so you'll probably see a bunch of deer around too uh in short order. And um so be careful out there. Don't don't uh hit one of our our furry friends, but um or or one of our deer friends for that matter. So Administrator Hill.
Was there a pun intended there with your dear friends? Sorry, maybe.
Yeah, no, it's it's fine.
Just I picked up on it. Um, just to the mayor's point on SR one oh four Ballenger Way, I have found a contact at the region's maintenance office. Um, and have had some communication with them on the poor quality of their repairs and timing of um the actual overlay. So they have been out taking a look at the corridor and will be scheduling a meeting with myself and Rebecca sometime in the near future to talk about next steps. And that's all I have for this evening.
Outstanding.
And read your C A report because it is full from every department.
It is. Yes, it is full.
And I would like to lift up one piece from the administrator report, if I may. Uh, comes from the uh police uh section. An officer responded to a possible prowl in progress. They found the subject and he was looking for his cat. The patrol assisted and they located the cat. What other community could that happen?
I know. Well, Chief.
Because that cat could have gotten caught by a coyote. It's very important. Thank you, Chief. Thanks to your patrol officers as well.
Well, thank you, Senator. Chief, you can you can speak to this, but at leadership team, the chief has always asked for a feel good story, right? Lindsay asked for it, and it is really important. It's part of our mental health program, right? All right, folks. Well, thank you so much, everybody. Is there anything else for the good of the order? And now we have an executive session for forty five minutes, right, Phil? Okay, good. There's nothing else for the good of the order. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. It's got to be, but it's been a long week.